As a person grows, this number will decrease to about 206 bones. This is because when babies are born, they have a lot more bones, they have a lot more cartilage in between the bones. And as they grow older, the bones fuse together to to decrease that number from 270 to 206. For example, have you ever seen how or noticed how babies are a little bit more flexible than most of us, even without stretching and whatnot? That's because they are, you know, more flexible, they have more cartilage between their bones. And this is because the bones haven't completely fused together yet, giving them more bones. So here you see this image. Anatomically, the skeletal system is divided into two major divisions. Okay, so we have the axial skeleton, which is, you know, this light pink color here. All this light pink color is the axial skeleton and the appendicular skeleton, which is all the blue parts. And these are, these are terms that you're definitely going to want to know. You're, you're going to want to know what is a part of the axial skeleton and what is part of the appendicular skeleton. So the axial skeleton, it consists of the bones of the skull, the sternum, which is right here, with the skull, the sternum, the, basically your spine. It cover, it protects your spinal cord and your rib cage, which is right here, your ribs. Also think of it as, you know, the axial skeleton or the bones along the body's medial axis, the bones in the middle of the body. The appendicular skeleton consists of the bones of the upper and the lower limbs and the associated girdles, which will be the shoulder or the pectoral girdle, which, you know, include the clavicle and the scapula. And they attach the upper limbs to the axial skeleton. Then you have the pelvic girdle here, the pelvis. And that connects the lower extremities, the legs, to the spine, the spinal column. And that connects it to the axial skeleton as well. So moving back up to this chart here. This chart summarizes the number of bones found in each skeletal division. So you have the axial part, remember that's the middle part. There's about approximately 80 bones there. Some of the smallest bones in your body are in your ear. Then you have the appendicular, remember the limbs and the girdles, the pectoral girdle with the shoulders, the scapula and the pelvis. And these are the amount of bones in those areas. Most of your bones, you're going to find in your feet, in your hands, because there's a bunch of tiny little bones in there. That's why the appendicular has so many more bones than the axial skeleton. So now that we know the basic anatomy of the bones, the skeletal system, let's talk a little bit more in depth. So the skeletal system isn't just, just bones. It consists of bones and cartilage and ligaments that are all tightly bound together to form a strong and flexible framework that allows us to stand up. It allows us to move rather than be sort of a stiff statue. Bones also, bones are known to be a form of active connective tissue that play a role in many of the functions of the skeletal system. Okay, so here we're going to go over these.
Before you go to that, I, someone had a question that kind of just wanted more examples of something. So we talked about the bone classifications.
We're going to get into that.
Okay, so Ivy Rosales, we'll get into that, bone classifications, long, short, flat, irregular. We'll, we'll cover all that coming up very soon.
Yep, so it's just, we're just breaking it down from, you know, the anatomy. And we'll, we'll break it down, so hold tight. Okay, so here. So like I said, the skeletal system is of an active form of connective tissue. It does many functions to allow us, you know, to move, to stand up, to walk. It also, it's a, a form of support. The bones and the cartilage support the body, the body posture, because both structures are pretty rigid. So they also allow a person to remain upright. And they provide that framework which soft tissues like muscles and organs can attach. So you have, you have your bones and then your muscles attached to the bones and the organs. Everything is connected, so it makes one whole framework. So when you have your whole body, usually one system isn't going to be able to work without another system's support. Okay, then the skeletal system, it's movement. Bones of this system interact with the muscular system, like I mentioned before, to help the body move. The bones themselves don't move. If you've ever seen a bone, it just sits there. But when a bone is connected to muscles, it's combined by ligaments. And with the actions of the muscles, whether they're flexing, and they're usually attached to a different bone, that helps the body move an arm. So say you have your humerus. Let's go back to this guy here. So you have your humerus, so. And then you have your radius and your ulna. Then you have your elbow, your arm, your elbow moves. If you didn't have this joint here, this elbow joint here, your arm wouldn't bend. So you have the, the ligaments in there, connected to the muscles, that help make that movement between the two bones. Okay, so the skeletal system also helps with protection of vital organs from external damage. So the skull will protect the brain, the vertebral column connects, protects the spinal cord, and the sternum and the rib cage protect the lungs. Without this protection, these organs could just be injured really badly. Bones are also a form of mineral storage. Inside the bones, there's important minerals like calcium and phosphorus. And we need these minerals for many different physiological functions of the body. And then we have, the bones are important for hematopoiesis. This is basically the process that bones use to produce red blood cells and stem cells. If you didn't know already, white blood cells and red blood cells are made within bone marrow. So you want to make sure that, you know, your bones are healthy and working correctly, because that's where all your new cells come from that go to the rest of your body. All right, so we have questions within the lesson. So let's do this first question here. Which is, which of the following is part of the axial skeleton? Going back to what we've talked about with the anatomy. The carpals, the femur, the patella, or the skull? Axial skeleton. And you can type this in the chat, A, B, C, or D, or the whole word.
We have a lot of people coming in with skull, so that's the unanimous answer. Someone said carpals, A. So it's mostly all skulls, so let's see if everybody is correct. I know in past sessions, people were on fire getting everything right, so let's see what tonight looks like.
Let's check skull. Correct. So why is the skull part of the axial skeleton? Remember with the axial skeleton, the appendicular skeleton, the axial is part of the, you know, the medial axis. It's part of the medial axis, right here. So it's part of the middle part, the middle bones. And just with these terms here, carpals, femur, patella, skull. A lot of, you know, a lot of bones and body parts have different, more common names, like the patella is the knee, the femur is the thigh bone, the carpals are the fingers. You're going to want to know the more official terms, especially going into the test. Okay, you're not going to find a question that's asking about the fingers. So make sure you know what the official terms are labeled on the body here. Okay. So let's talk about the bone shape and structure. So I'm going to go to the image of the bone. We'll get to these in a minute. Okay, so here's a long bone here. So the overall structure of bone consists of an outer shell called compact bone. Okay, it encloses another type of bone tissue that's loosely organized, spun, spongy or cancelish, cancelous bone. This is basically a meshwork of spongy tissue, so you see it here. And that's kind of what it looks like if you were to open up that part of the bone. And it's usually found in the, the ends of long bones. Compact bone is made of units called osteons. And let's see, these structures look like cylinders, and we'll also get into that a little bit more. These cylinders, the osteons, contain a mineral matrix and living bone cells. Each osteon also contains a haversian canal that houses the bones, blood vessels, and nerve fibers. So bones aren't just hollow, empty tubes. And they're not just solid, full bone. As you can see, inside the bone, there's a lot more stuff that's going on. You're going to have bone marrow, there's going to be red bone marrow, red bone marrow, yellow bone marrow, and they all do different things. We'll get into that in a little bit. So, hang on one second. So here's that compact bone. So surrounding the compact bone is a fibrous membrane called the periosteum. This consists of blood vessels, nerves, and lymphatic vessels that nourish the compact bone. And just like other parts of the body have nerves and vessels, blood vessels and veins, they also go into the bones as well. That's how the red, the, the blood cells are going to get into the body. So let's, we're going to go back to this table here. These are the bone types, which someone had asked about. So there's five types of bones in the body. There's a long, short, flat, irregular, and sesmoid bone. Here in this table, it details the characters, details the characteristics of each bone and where they are found. So long bones, they're elongated bones, longer, they're much longer than they are wide. You're going to find this in the femur, which is the thigh bone, the tibia, the clavicle, humerus, which is your upper arm, and the metacarpals. Let's go back to this guy. So here's your humerus, your femur, metacarpals, and the tibia, fibula, sorry, radius, ulna, so those long bones. Then we have flat bones, they're broad bones that are more thin. And this is usually the side of where muscle attachment is. So think of the scapula or your shoulder blade, your hip bones, sternum, nasal bone, occipital and parietal, frontal bones of the skull. Okay, so we just went over the flat bones. They are, as they appear, flat. Okay, and you have irregular bones, which aren't really a uniform shape. And they're not really, they don't have a, a place with the other types of bones. And this, they provide mechanical support for the body. And these are the vertebrae, which are your vertebral column, which houses your spinal cord. And if you've ever seen them, they all kind of stack on top of each other. They're separated, each little piece here is separated by a cartilage, and they all kind of just fit together on top of each other. And that's where you will find the irregular bones.
So someone was asking, what's the best way to remember the difference between axial and appendicular? I was getting confused on that.
So I would just think axial, like your medial axis. So this is the medial part of the body. You're going to find those axial bones in the middle part of the body. Appendicular bones are more of your appendages. So think about the parts that hang off your body. So you have the parts in the middle, the skull, go back to this guy. Now you have the skull, the rib cage, the vertebral column. Okay, this here, although the light pink or white, whichever cream color, however it looks like on your, your screen, that's the axial part of the skeleton, right? All the stuff in the medial axis. Appendicular, the appendages, your arms, your legs, and the associated girdles, the pelvis and the scapula and the clavicle, part of the pectoral girdle, that hold together those appendages, those arms and those legs. The pelvic girdle, pectoral girdle. So you have the axial, the ones that are right in the middle. Appendicular on the outside, connected by the pelvis and the pectoral girdle. Does that make sense?
And for someone who's not an expert on bones, someone was asking about if, if there are ear bones, but I think those are more cartilage, or are there bones in the ear?
Nope, as you can see, let's go back to here. So no, your, your ears have very, the tiniest bones in your whole body, and there's about six of them. The inner ear ossicles, and there's little names for them. I can, you, you're pretty much not going to be tested on the six bones in the ear, but there's only six of them. To, you know, take a gander at what those are, what those are, what they look like. And, and when, you know, we're just doing a brief review here. I would recommend you doing a little bit more research and studying on your own to, you know, really get the long list of, what are the long bones, okay? As you can see here, the long bones, pretty self-explanatory. Then the short bones. You're really going to find them in your hands and your feet. Sesmoid, smaller bones, mechanical movement, provide protection. You know, that's the kneecap, the patella. So this is not an extensive list. So I'd recommend, you know, doing a little bit more extra research, writing it down, making a list, long bones, than what's under a long bone. And there's a lot of bones, there's a lot of bones in your hands. You're not going to need to know every single bone in there, but you know, know most of them. Okay. So there we go, let's get back to the bones here. Sesmoid bones, these are smaller bones, like we said before, like the patella, like the kneecap, they provide support for movement and protection. And then you have short bones, which also provides support, but not much movement. So that's your, the hands and your feet and your wrists. So these are the ones you're, you're going to find probably right about in here, not so much your fingers, but you know, the palms and down here, which more, you know, help your body be supported. Your hands support, your feet support. And they're all connected together, but they're not necessarily, there's not a lot of movement going on, like in your elbow or your, your hips and whatnot. So let's go back to the anatomy of the bone. We're just going to talk about the long bone here, which and just remember, most bone, even though we're going to talk about the long bone here, all, pretty much all the bones have the same stuff going on inside them, they're just not going to look like this shape. So you see in this image here, there's three major sections. You have the proximal epiphysis, the diaphysis, and the distal epiphysis. Okay, so we have the epiphysis. You have a proximal, the distal, proximal up, the upper part, and distal is the lower part. So also when studying anatomy, physiology, you want to know your anatomical position. So you're going to know, if something asks you what, about the proximal epiphysis of your humerus, it's going to be this part that goes in your shoulder. The distal is going to be down here by your, down, the down part, by your elbow. So the epiphysis is found at the, the, at each end of the long bones. It's primarily made up of the spongy bone, kind of with these, looks like sponge. It doesn't feel like a sponge, though, so it's squishy, with a thin layer of compact bone. Bone growth occurs in this area. So if you've ever heard of a child who broke a bone, they need to get it checked out, you want to make sure that there's no break within the growth plate. Growth plates are found in children's bones, and that's where most of the growth happens. And that's because the cartilage is in there, and that's how they extend, and then they turn into more hard bone. So the growth plates are between the middle and the end of the long bones. Then we have the articular cartilage. Let's hear, and this is covering the epiphysis, and it decreases frictions of the joints. So, you know, let's think back to that shoulder joint there. You have this cartilage here, because without it, the bone is hard, and it would just be grinding against a different bone. So you're going to, and you know, some people have injuries and overuse where this cartilage does, goes away, and people are in a lot of pain because of it. Then we have the diaphysis, which is that long part of the bone, the longest part. And it's mostly compact bone, which is, see compact bone here? So you have the spongy bone, and then it's more of the solid, white bone that you would normally think of. But it's not compact throughout the whole part of the bone. That's the diaphysis, and you have the medullary cavity. This is found inside the long bone. This is where the red and the yellow bone marrow live. The red marrow is where the hematopoiesis occurs, and the yellow marrow usually per, is, consists of fat cells. This is, basically, babies, when babies are born, most of the, the red bone marrow, most of their bone marrow is red. It's usually 100% red, because it helps their body grow, because they have so much growth to, to go on in such a short period of time. Eventually, as you get older, that red turns into yellow, which is mostly made up of fat. And as adults usually have about 50/50 of the red bone marrow and the yellow bone marrow. And also remember, there are those small and large blood vessels and veins that run through the bone marrow. And it also, that's where it helps get the nutrients and waste out of the bone, and it filters out of the body. Without that, you know, waste would just build up in the bones. The bones would just be clogged up with things it doesn't need, and it's not, they're not going to do their jobs. Just a little brief, a brief more stuff about bone marrow. Red bone marrow consists of new red blood cells, white blood cells, and platelets, because that's, this is where they're made. And usually, most of red bone marrow is found in the center of flat bones, like shoulder blades and ribs, but you're going to find red bone marrow in pretty much all bones. Yellow bone marrow, like I said, mostly made of fat. It's usually in the hollow centers of long bones, like this one. And, and the yellow bone marrow doesn't make blood cells or platelets. That's, that's for the red.
Someone was asking if you can just quickly repeat the part about the red and yellow bone marrow?
Okay, so red adults, most adults have about 50% red bone marrow, 50% yellow bone marrow. When babies are born, they have 100% red bone marrow, because it, it helps their body grow. They do so much growing. Kids, newborn babies, you know, one-year-olds, up until childhood, they have so much growing that needs to happen. Whereas when you're adult, you know, once, you know, once you go through puberty, you hit a point in time where you're not growing taller anymore. You're not, you know, you've, you've hit that, that spot where your bones aren't growing any longer. So babies and young kids have so much growing that they need that 100% red bone marrow, red bone marrow that helps them grow. It's constantly making new red blood cells, new white blood cells and platelets. As they, as you get older, you hit puberty, you don't, the growth slows down, and a lot of that red, that 100% red goes down to 50% red, and then the other 50% is yellow bone marrow.
Okay, cool. Going, just going back to that question about where the calcium is stored. Someone actually jumped in, Diana Haishaz, said calcium is stored in the bone matrix. So that's good to know. And then someone's asking, is yellow bone marrow found in all bones?
It's usually found in the centers of the long bones. So these, the femurs, the humerus.
Okay.
So basically, all bones are generally made out of the same materials. The distribution of those materials are going to look a little bit different. Because, you know, a long bone is different than a flat bone, like the scapula. So the way things are organized within that bone are going to look a little bit different based on their shape. But they're all pretty much, all your bones serve a purpose within your body. Okay, so let's do this question over here. A histologist cracks open the tibia. While viewing the inside, what does he see? Remember what a tibia is? Go back to this guy. All right, tibia is here, it's a long bone of the leg. It's the big one, if you feel the front of your shin, right there, that's your tibia. So if someone cracks open that tibia and they look inside, what are you going to see? The diaphysis? Soft tissue? Spongy bone? Or proximal epiphysis?
Everybody's coming through with choice C, which is spongy bone. Does anybody think otherwise? Going, 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 Ivy Rosales says A. We have another A, another A. Everybody switched over from C to A.
All right, let's try C. Spongy bone. All right, so let, let's talk about that for a minute. Let's look at this, this image a little bit bigger. So if someone's going to crack open the bone, the proximal epiphysis, think of proximal epiphysis, the diaphysis, and the distal epiphysis are the locations of the bone. Okay, if you crack it open, you'll see compact bone, spongy bone. Okay, so do this question, they did not. Compact bone is an option. So epiphysis is a location, the upper part. The diaphysis is the middle, the long part. And soft tissue is not found in bones. Soft tissue is commonly used to describe muscles and tendons, ligaments, but not bone, okay? So it's going to be that spongy bone. You crack open, so you crack open the top of the long bone, and you're going to see that, that sponge-like appearance.
Because I want to point out, if you guys don't have the online course, a lot of people ask about differences between, you know, the study guide book that we have and the online course. And I'll just point out that, among many other things, and just that the online course has a lot more material in it, something that we did about three or four months ago was rewrote all the answer explanations to be much more detailed. Things that you can't really do in the book. So, you know, in the book, you'd have a thousand-page book if every single, you know, 1,000 questions had answer explanations like this. So it's just something you can't do in a book, but it's one of the advantages to the online course. So Melissa actually went through and rewrote a lot of these specifically for A and P. And we did this for all the subject areas, math, reading, English, so that there's just much more in-depth review of all the question, answer explanations, so you can really understand why the answer is correct or incorrect. So that's kind of why you see these more detailed answers. But I just wanted to point that out, and if you guys have the course, you, you already know that. But for those who don't, worth pointing out.
Okay, so now we're going to talk about ossification and bone remodeling. And this is basically how bones grow, because like I mentioned before, you know, and as everyone knows, when babies are born, they are very small. And, but they still have, they actually have more bones than you do when you're, you're, you're bigger. And, but they still have, they actually have more bones than you do when you're, you're, you're bigger. So ossification and bone remodeling is, you know, how they, how the bones grow and change over time. And, you know, it seems odd that, you know, bones are such a hard structure, how can they grow? But they do. And most of this occurs during childhood. Once you kind of pass that puberty stage, you get into the late teens, twenties, thirties, your bones aren't growing anymore, okay? So ossification, these are terms you're definitely gonna want to know. Ossification is the process of bone formation that occurs during embryonic development. So inside the uterus when the baby, when, when someone becomes pregnant, when the baby starts to grow inside, the bones are already starting to grow as well. But in early development, you know, this transformation begins with soft flexible cartilage, which eventually turns into hard bone. And it replaces, eventually replaces the cartilage with mineral deposits like calcium and phosphorus. And then the ossification begins from the center of the bones and spreads towards the end of the bones, changing that cartilage into more hard bone. So, like we said before, when a baby's born, there's a lot of cartilage found within the skeleton, especially those long bones, because those are the ones that are really gonna grow. Think about someone who's six feet tall. You know, their, their femur, their thigh bone is really gonna need to grow in order for them to get so tall. So like I mentioned before, there's growth plates and these are found at the end of the long bones. And those growth plates are made of cartilage. And as a child grows, that cartilage at the growth plate experiences that ossification, which we mentioned before, which helps elongate the bone and helps a person grow taller. And this is why if you've, like, I think I mentioned this before, but if, you know, if a child breaks their wrist or their leg, they, it's really important to get those X-ray images to see where that break is, what kind of break is it? Because if that break goes through that bone, that growth plate of the bone, it can really damage the growth and affect the growth in that specific bone. You could say it's in the leg, it can really affect the, the length of the, the ultimate outcome of the length of that leg. So it, you definitely want to make sure that those things are checked out if, if there's ever a break in the bone. So let's talk about ossification. It, you know, also plays a role in the bone remodeling. Mature bone tissue is constantly being broke down through a process called bone reabsorption. And through ossification, new bone tissues replace the old bone. And this is basically, you know, as I said, when you get older, you're not really growing taller, right? Your, your bones aren't getting bigger, they're not getting longer. But if you break a bone, it's still gonna heal. And, you know, there's still some remodeling going on within that bone. And this is because there's three types of bone cells. So these bone cells that help make up bones are, we have osteocytes, which produce collagen and other substances and create the extracellular matrix of the bone, which is inside the bone. Then you have osteoblasts. These are bone-forming cells. These are found on the surface of the bone. And they can be stimulated to differentiate it to other types of bone cells called osteocytes. And then we have osteoclasts. These are called bone reabsorbing cells and they're found on the surface of the bone as well. And they dissolve into the bone. So you have, we have the osteocytes, which are the specific bone cells. And we find those inside the bone in the extracellular matrix. Then the osteoblasts and the osteoclasts, bone-forming cells and bone reabsorbing cells, they're found on the surface of the bone. Okay, so let's see. And here's some images of those. So as I mentioned earlier, within the compact bone, there's the osteons and the extracellular matrix of the bone, the osteocytes, the, the bone cells are found within, in those osteons. Right, and the osteoclasts and osteoblasts are found on the outside of, on the bone surface. Okay, and just, this image, just to give you some more visuals. Say this is a long bone and this will be the distal epiphysis. So think of the humerus, which is your upper arm bone. And the distal, the bottom part of that humerus would be, this is the cartilage that's connecting down by that elbow where that joint is. And here's an osteon here. So the osteocytes would be found inside, those bone cells would be found inside these osteons here. So just, you see this little tube, this canal here? We'll break it down into here. The osteoclast, osteoblast would be found on the outside. Okay, so here's a, here's another question. This is not a multiple-choice answer. This, fill in the blank. What bone cell is a bone-forming cell? Okay, we just talked about this. Bone-forming cell. So remember, we have bone cells, bone-forming cells and bone reabsorbing cells. What do we think it is? So that leaves us with osteocytes, osteoblasts and osteoclasts.
Most people are coming in with osteoblast. Just about everybody, so I think we're all, we're all on the same page with that.
Correct. And that's because they are found, they're bone-forming cells and we find them on the outside. Here's the bone, here's the, another picture, and outs, on the outside of the bone is the osteoblast. And they help form new bone as older bone is broken down through reabsorption. So you want to know these terms, you want to know the difference, where to find them. In terms of how to remember them, that's kind of up to you. When I was studying and trying to remember all this stuff, I would make, you know, even how silly it was, you know, whatever helps you remember that osteoblasts. Think of the bone-forming blast, okay? So things like that. You're gonna, it's gonna blast it out and make new bone-forming cells. And also something to keep in mind that whenever you're just reading things, osteo, this part here, osteo, is the Greek word for bone. So if you ever see osteo, just know it's referring to a bone. Most of the medical terms are based off the Greek word, so good to know those. Okay, so that kind of breaks down, you know, the basics of the skeletal system.
I think we can go over this review and then if you guys want, we have about 10 more minutes. So we can just go over this quick review, Melissa can outline what this lesson was about. And then actually, actually have some more exercises here. So again, you know, again, I kind of mentioned about the differences between the book and the online course and this is kind of a prime example. So here, this is going to be an exercise where we label kind of the different areas and we put them in the correct order, kind of going down. So, so we can do that exercise, there's some flashcards. But if we have more time after maybe labeling the skeletal system, we can go into the question bank, which would be questions just for the skeletal system. I don't know if I'll have time to do that, but if we do, it's an option. But let's go over that review and then label the skeletal system and see where we are at that point.
Okay, so just, you know, just right here, you know, the skeletal stuff from the beginning. The skeletal system, what does it do? It provides structural support and protection with, helps us move and, you know, helps us stand up straight, helps protect our organs, like our lungs, our brain, our spinal cord, and aids in movement. It, you know, in combination with the muscular system and, and ligaments. Tendon, things are, you know, the bones are able to move and we're able to move our body. It serves as a mineral reservoir and it helps produce cells, you know, those red blood cells, white blood cells and platelets. The appendicular skeleton. Remember the appendages, it consists of the upper and the lower extremities and those associated girdles, pectoral girdle and the pelvic girdle. Then you have the axial skeleton, which is the skull, the sternum. The sternum is this part right here in between your ribs. The axial skeleton also is the rib cage and the vertebral column, which is your spine, which, which houses your spinal cord. There's five bone types, the long, the short, flat, irregular and sesmoid bones. Ossification is a bone-forming process, usually mostly takes place during childhood. Because that's when all, all the growth occurs. Bone remodeling is a process that involves replacing old, mature bone tissue with new bones. And say someone has a bone injury, a break. You know, there's a process to help that bone repair. We have osteons, which are bone cells found in compact bone that contain the Haversian canal, which is a site for the blood vessels and the nerve fibers. And inside there, you're gonna have the osteocytes, which are the bone cells found deep within the bone. And then the osteoblasts and the osteoclasts. Remember osteoblasts are the bone forming, forming new cells. Osteoblasts and then the osteoclasts are the bone dissolving or reabsorbing cells. Okay? And so basically with the, you know, the anatomy, anatomy and physiology, you want to know what is what. You know, you know, this is the skull, et cetera. You really want to know where things are in the body. Should we label these?
Yeah, so you label them kind of just starting at the, the top and.
So, let's see. Place the labels in the correct order to label the diagram. So one up here would be the skull. Okay, so we're gonna order them. Two, this is here, the sternum. Alright, it's already there. Number three, here is the vertebral column. Right, and just make your way down. Four, sorry, I'm trying to see where the... So number four here is the radius, I believe. The radius, a way to remember this, how I always remember is, you have the two bones here, the radius and the ulna. The radius is always where you're gonna check for a pulse and it's always gonna be near your thumb. And the ulna is on the, more on the pinky, your pinky side. So that would be number five. Right, radius, ulna. Six, two of that's, alright, right up there. It's our pelvis, which is, there are specific parts of the pelvis and ilium is one of them. The ilium, the ischium and the, sorry, it's slipping my mind. It is late at night.
Melissa is also eight months pregnant, due in about a month. So she's probably got a few more of these sessions left in her and then I think it's on to take things easy after that. So we're all very thankful that she's still kind of staying up till 10 o'clock at night and putting this all together for us.
Okay, so part of the pelvic girdle here, you have the ilium, the ischium and the pelvis, and the pubis, I'm sorry. The pubis is down, down in this part. Ilium, ischium and the pubis makes up the pelvic girdle. So that's six. Number seven, femur. There. Seven, there's the patella there, which is number eight. Is the tibia. And the fibula would be number nine. Let's see if I got that right. 10pm, yes, okay.
Wow, you got it all right, all green, that's what we like to see.
Alright, so, and, and you know, these are the, these are the basic bones, you definitely want to know. You know, what are these, what are these guys? You know, this is the humerus, this is the scapula, this is the clavicle, this little skinny one across, you know, you can feel your, your clavicle. These are your ribs. This is more your hip joint here. This here's the coccyx, the, the, the end of your spinal cord. This is your patella. So you know, just, you want to know what bones are which. Especially when there's, you know, the two here, the radius and ulna. Radius is always where the thumb is. Ulna is on the outer side where the pinky is. And for the tibia and fibula, tibia in your leg and your shin is the big one. Fibula is the one in the back, the smaller part.
Yeah, I don't know if that video was playing, but for everybody else who's on here, if you want to stick around for another five minutes, we'll let Melissa go and then I'll share my screen and I'll just do a walkthrough of the online course. So that if you don't have it, you can get an idea of what the online course is all about. So let me go ahead and do that now, I'm gonna share my screen. Okay, cool. Alright, so I've got my screen up here and I'll be kind of just going through this, showing you guys what's in there. Just to get an idea of how many folks have the course or don't have the course, just so I have an idea of what all I should be showing here. Just post in the comments if you don't have the course and if it's something that you want to take a look at. Alright, so a good amount of people don't have it. So, alright, so this is gonna be for the TEES course. If you are taking the HESI or the CAPLAIN exam, it's set up the same way and really there's kind of subtle differences between those tests. You know, HESI has physics in it and whereas TEES and CAPLAIN don't. The math for CAPLAIN is a lot more simple than the TEES. So you would see subjects in the TEES that you wouldn't see on the CAPLAIN. But for the sake of getting an idea of what the courses look like, this will kind of do the trick for you. So let me go ahead and do that. So we have the full online course and and what you'll see is that everything is really broken down well into each subject section of the test, reading, math, English and science. And then within each section, there are these kind of subtopics or topics and then subtopics. So for key ideas and details and reading, you'd have the subtopics of main ideas, topic sentence, supporting details. And if we go over to science, you know, it'll be the same idea. It's all your A and P, your life sciences, chemistry. And if we go into any of these lessons, now you guys all just got a really good idea of what the lessons look like that Melissa just went through. But I'll open up the cardiovascular system. Alright, so this is like the cardiovascular system. And again, you'll, at the beginning of every lesson, of every single lesson, there's over 100 video lessons. So at the beginning of every lesson, there are videos. A lot of lessons have two videos. So in this case, we see the cardiovascular system, there's one video, there's another video, kind of a part two. And these run, you know, 10 minutes and they really run anywhere from like five to 15 minutes, kind of depending on the length of that topic. So you'd have two videos that you can watch on the cardiovascular system. Then you go through the lesson, you know, you guys all saw what this looks like, questions kind of throughout the lesson. And then we do try and put in some of these kind of interactive questions. So it's not just multiple choice, which is what the test will be. But it can be nice to learn in other ways, other than just straight multiple choice. So you'd have things where you have to sort elements and do things like that. And a lot of diagrams and illustrations and things like that, so you can get an idea of, you know, what it is that you're learning, again, different types of questions and things like that. And then at the end of each lesson, you have a review, more kind of different labeling type questions. And then you'll have flashcards that are specific just for the cardiovascular system. And so you can kind of practice your knowledge here. And so you can kind of practice your knowledge here after you've studied the lesson. You can mark if you got it right or wrong. If you mark it right, it'll kind of take it out of the deck, so that you get down to just the questions that you got wrong. And if you refresh the page, it'll kind of reset it for you. But that's what a basic lesson module consists of. And again, you guys saw that as Melissa just went through the whole lesson. Now beyond that, you have eight practice tests. So I just got done writing a really in-depth blog post, and we're gonna make a video within the next week or so about practice tests and why they're so important. And one of the biggest things is that the practice tests are timed. So that's something that you really want to become more comfortable with. Now, this exam is over three and a half hours. So for your brain, that's like running a marathon. So you want to get comfortable with sitting through an entire test in one sitting, so that you're kind of training for that marathon. You don't want to show up on test day and have it be your first time that you've had to sit through a three and a half hour test. You want to have done it many, many times. And so that's one of the reasons we offer eight different practice tests. A lot of other kind of resources don't have as many as eight. So if you only have two, you start to memorize those questions. So we thought it was really important to have as many practice tests as we could put together for you guys, so that's what you have. And I'll go through and just maybe pick the science test, and I'll start that. And so you'll see the clock start. And one of the other things that you really need to be able to do is be able to work within the time constraints. So it's not, not just that it's a three and a half hour test you need to be familiar with. You really need to get good at working within this time limit, which means that you need to be able to answer these questions as fast as possible. Now, this really comes into play for things like reading, because you need to read these long passages, and the passages on the TEES are very long, as well as the HESI and the CAPLIN test. And you need to be able to go in there, read that passage, be able to look at the question, be able to go back to the passage, pick out the answer as fast as possible. And that's something that you really need to train yourself to be quick with. Another example is word problems. A lot of people get tripped up on word problems and take too long on word problems. And for the math section, it's actually pretty short. So you need to be able to answer these questions within a minute. And so that's what this timing of the test really helps you with. So that's all really important factors. And another great thing that these practice tests do is, once I complete the practice test, it's going to give me a scored report. And this scored report is going to break down all of the different topics. In this case, for the science section, it's gonna break down all the topics. And, you know, I didn't really take the test, but you would see maybe that for the cardiovascular system, you scored a 25%. But for the endocrine system, you scored a 85%. So you take this practice test, and then you start to get an idea of what your weak areas are, because if you had three questions on the cardiovascular system, you got them all wrong. And so you can kind of start to pick out what your weak areas are with this report. And from that, you can really get an idea of what you should be spending your time on. So you can be more efficient with your time, knowing exactly what topics within science, math, reading, English are your weak areas. And then you can go into the lessons, you can watch those videos, go over the lessons, do the flashcards. There's also a question bank I'll show in just a minute. So you can do all that practice on any of these particular topics, strengthen those areas, go back, take another practice test, and you should start to see your score improve if you're kind of working through that type of a system. And when I press view questions, I'm going to see all the answer explanations. And if you were in the session tonight, I did mention at one point that we just did a big, big project about three or four months ago to rewrite thousands of answer explanations, so that they were much more detailed. And so that's kind of what we see here. We'll see kind of really detailed answer explanations that really explain why the answer is right or wrong. And so that's kind of what you have here. Now, after you've taken these practice tests, you can go to my test results, and you can go back to any of the tests to review them, see how you scored. And so I might see, I don't know, I'll just look at this math test. And it'll give you that scored report again. And you can look at the answer explanation again. And one of the cool things in here is that it shows you your time per question. So again, when I talked about word problems, maybe slowing you down, you can kind of see that, let's say for math, you need to answer every question within one minute. You can see that this one took you maybe three minutes, and that's just way too long. And then you can really start to kind of hone in on that and figure out ways to get faster at those particular types of questions that you're finding yourself much slower on. And so this scored report also, it kind of breaks things down by the category. So you'll see the, you know, there were four questions on addition and subtraction of fractions, only one question on circles, three on decimals and fractions. And so you can get an idea of per topic within math, how you did get a score, you know, on just those topics. And then down at the bottom, you'll get your, you know, the full amount of time you took, and your right and wrong answers, and the percent you scored on that practice test that you took. So I'll go back to the course, and then after covering the practice test, I think the only thing to look at after that is all our lesson modules, the practice tests. I'll go to the second page of the course. And we also put in additional bonus practice tests with more chemistry and biology, because we heard that there were quite a good number of people saying that they were getting more chemistry or biology than they expected. So we put together another practice test for that. They said, can you listen to the videos while you work or drive? You absolutely can, and this is a very mobile-friendly course. So I think if I can show you this, this is actually sort of a responsive nature. So this is sort of demonstrating a mobile device. If you got really skinny like this, it's responsive. So this is gonna look and feel just like an app. And if I go into any of these lessons, it'll look like this. And I can press play on any of these videos. Or I guess I took a practice test here, but get the same idea. This is exactly what it would look like on a mobile device. If you're on a tablet, it would look something more like this, like on an iPad. And if you're on a full-size laptop or computer screen, you know, it changes for you. So you can use this on any device, and yes, you can play the videos while you're driving or at work, whatever you like to do. So I'm just gonna go back to the course. And the last thing that I want to show you is just the new question bank that we added into the course. So that is gonna be on the second page of the course. And after the practice test, you have this question bank by topic. So again, this was something, I don't know, I talked about word problems. And if you want more practice on just word problems, you don't have to go into a practice test and take a whole math practice test that has all the different topics. You can just do what's called solving real-world math problems, that's your word problems. And if I go in here, this one actually has a lot more than the other topics. It has 103 word problems that you can practice, that are gonna be very similar to the actual questions that you will see on the TEES. Typically, most of these practice tests, or most of these question bank, question banks have probably more like maybe 30 questions, 20 or 30 questions. So I don't know, I'll go back into cardiovascular system, and yeah, there's 36 questions here. So that's what you have, and so you can really drill in just on a particular topic. And then there are flashcards within each lesson. So we kind of break them out and piece them out into each lesson. But if you wanted to do kind of larger sets of like English or say anatomy and physiology altogether, you'd have 259 anatomy and physiology questions for life and physical science, you know, 47 chemistry. But we actually will break those 259 A and P flashcards and just pull out the cardio ones, just pull out the skeletal systems, just pull out the muscular systems. So just those flashcards are at the end of each lesson. But if you want to do a big set and just kind of run through everything, you can do that with the flashcards here. So that is everything in the online course. It's definitely a lot. We're really kind of proud of what we put together. We, we started this about four years ago, and it has come a long way. There's been a lot of iterations on these tests, a lot of feedback from students, like you're, like you guys who help us make this better. So that's what the course is all about. And so Evelyn Espinoza, you're asking if there is a version for the HESI. There is. I will, I'll just go to our website real quick. And if you go to the website, you can see TEES, HESI, CAPLIN. And I can go into the HESI, and you'd have the option to look at the online course there. But what you're seeing for the TEES online course, I guess just navigated away from it. But what I just showed for the TEES online course looks very similar for the HESI course. I mean, the, the actual like, online course is the same, just the material is a little bit different. The practice tests are gonna be different. There's different question numbers for the HESI, the timing is different. There's more subjects, there's physics and more chemistry sections, stuff that's not on the TEES. So that would be on the HESI, not on the TEES. You would see that in the course. So the courses are a little bit different, but the layout, video lessons, flashcards, practice tests, all that stuff is going to look and feel the same as what I just showed. Okay, cool. So if anybody has any other questions, let me know now. I'm happy to answer them. Other than that, we'll wrap this up. And you guys always have the options to email us, hit the chat on the website, or hit us anywhere else on Facebook, Instagram, or on Pinterest. We just started a TikTok, so we're posting there a couple of days as well. So if you guys are on there, check out our videos there. We'll have kind of lots of little tidbits and educational stuff on the TikTok. So hopefully that'll help you. Yeah, okay, cool. So other than that, I appreciate you guys. Yeah, definitely follow us on TikTok. It's Smart Edition Academy. Anything for test anxiety, Brenda. You know, I, I think there's kind of two different types of anxiety that, that students face. And the first is the amount of information that you need to know. And just looking at A and P, for example, like, oh my God, there's so much I need to know. And depending on how comfortable you are with this material, at this point, it, it can be pretty overwhelming. One thing to know is that this is all, at least according to ATI, this is all material that is high school level, particularly for the reading, English, and math. I know a lot of people didn't take A and P in high school. I'm 38, so I'm trying to remember 20 years ago if I took A and P in high school, and I don't think I did. I know I took chemistry, but this is supposed to be high school material. So don't, you know, think that it's, it's super high-level college stuff that you need to know. That's kind of one thing. And then with all the material that you need to know, which can give you anxiety, I talked about with those practice tests of trying to really narrow down to what your strengths and weaknesses are. So instead of saying, I need to study everything, just say, actually, I'm pretty good with some stuff. Here are the exact topics I need to study. And then you can try and tackle those topics. So break it out into the smaller pieces, into the smaller amount of topics, and that should help. And then the other part to test anxiety is the timing of the test. And you might not realize it until you actually get into test day, and you press start, and you see that timer start, and you're like, oh my God, I gotta get going. I, you know, you get flustered because you see that clock. So taking the time practice tests many times before actually taking the test, you're gonna feel comfortable, you're gonna know, I have exactly one hour and three minutes to do the science. You know that. You've already practiced and practiced and practiced. You've completed the practice test in the allotted amount of time several times before test day. So that's not gonna throw you off as much. So those are just kind of two things for anxiety. Other than that, I mean, other people are suggesting prayer, breath, breath, breathe, breathe, breathe. Yeah, all definitely stuff you can do. So, I mean, that's my two cents. Hopefully that helps, but, you know, it helps with everything just generally in life. Anything you're doing, break it down into the smaller pieces, tackle that. And then you get a big project done by kind of doing something like that. So. All right, cool. So any other questions, just send us a chat on the website or post in the Facebook group, and we'll help you guys out there.